Hey, you're all set? Okay, great. Well, it's six twelve. And why don't we open the public hearing? It's an administrative appeal for Michael Reynolds, received on April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, and was tabled on May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two. Primarily because we decided that we needed a public hearing to deal with any of butters, people with standing of butters and people within five hundred feet. Of property owners within five hundred feet. So, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. You're Michael's mom?
Yes, Amy.
Since you're the presenter, would you go over what you want to do?
Sure. I can just, I just kind of did a summary again. Do you want me to just read from that?
Sure.
Okay. So, because I can't see who else is in the room besides you guys, so I don't know who I'm addressing, but...
Like, we can ask them to introduce themselves.
Okay.
Yep, want to start off?
Hi, Amy. I'm Bob Landis from the Quasic Union Church. So, my phone is up right in front of the door, so I can't hear you wrong.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Bob Landis.
I'm Robin Landis, also at the Quasic Church.
Reverend Tony McNaughton, I am the pastor of our church.
Donald Curtis, a member of the parish.
Okay. So, there's only four people. Well, there's another person, too.
I'm Lily, just bystander.
All right. So, I guess you can go ahead.
Okay. Okay. Hello, my name is Amy Reynolds, and thank you all for agreeing to let me participate in this hearing through Zoom again. I wish I could have been there in person tonight, because then I could follow the conversation better, which is kind of what I was just alluding to, and not interrupt you as often as I did during our first meeting, which I apologize for, it was hard to keep track. I'm sorry, also sorry for wasting some time with you last, during the last weekend, arguing about the need for the public hearing on this. I am embarrassed that it took me so long to understand that you were just following the rules that I was unaware of, in order to allow everyone involved an opportunity to be heard. Before I begin, I would also like to thank Bailey for her input during our last meeting. I was under the false impression that because she was the one to deny the building permit, that meant she agreed with the town attorney's position for denying it, and I didn't know that she had recommended it to be approved, but in the end was forced to deny it only because of the position the town attorney chose to take. To summarize, from our end where we're at now, I'm appealing the decision to deny my son Michael's building permit for a single-family dwelling on the lot he and his wife purchased, excuse me, in March of twenty-twenty-one, located at fifty-five B Cary Road. Almost five months after the building permit application was submitted, a determination was made by town attorney Kristin Collins to deny the permit. In her memorandum to Bailey Beers, she states that the rationale for her opinion was based on the fact that the dimensional requirement applies to the overall boundaries of the lot itself. Since the road frontage is on Route Four in the downtown commercial district, where there is no minimum frontage requirement, it seems clear that with over fifty feet, he has the frontage he needs. But she goes on to say in the same paragraph that she decided there was no basis for this, that there is no basis under these provisions to consider the portion within the resource protection zone and the portion within the downtown commercial zone district separately. Except that's exactly what she did by choosing to apply the more restrictive requirements of the resource protection zone and that not downtown commercial district, even when the section thirty-eight point four point four of the town code states that where a district boundary line divides a lot or parcel of land, the regulations applicable to the less restrictive portion of the lot, in this case, the downtown commercial district, may be extended not more than fifty feet into the more restricted portion of the lot, in this case, the resource protection zone. The only reason that I saw that she gave for us, gave us for her decision was that, and I quote, "If we were to apply the frontage standard only to the district in which the frontage sits, developers could avoid more restrictive standards just by accessing any development through the less restrictive zone." And that to interpret the code to allow this largely rated resource protection lot to benefit from downtown commercial district's lack of frontage requirement would go against the ordinance intended to require development in the resource protection zone to be spread out. But as I stated in our last meeting, Michael is not a developer, and he is not requesting the house be built in the resource protection zone. It would be entirely within the downtown commercial district, unless he were given special permission to extend the house by fifty feet into resource protection based on that section thirty-eight point four point four of the town code, which he would love to do, but only if given your permission to do so. Also, excuse me, we touched on this during our last meeting. Bailey correctly pointed out that setting this precedent by granting Michael his building permit would not matter to future developments, because any developer would still have to meet the requirements in the more restrictive zone if they wished to build in it. She stated that giving access to resource protection zone does not guarantee the ability to build in that resource protection zone, because they would still need separate approvals. In her, in the town attorney's conclusion, she quotes, she states, and I quote, "I believe the building permit application should be denied for the failure of the lot to meet the road frontage requirement applicable to lots in the resource protection district." Despite her also stating earlier in her memorandum, "Well, it is of no consequence that the lot was advertised as being in resource protection. Its zoning is as shown in the town zoning maps," end quote. The fact is that the frontage for this lot is located in downtown commercial district, where there is at least fifty front of feet, fifty feet of frontage and no minimum frontage requirement. With the exception of the fifty-foot extension into resource protection, if you were to allow that, we are not asking to have the standards of the less restrictive district extended to the more restricted district, but rather to have the dimensional requirement or frontage be applied for the district in the dimension it sits. Building this house would be a lifelong dream come true for my son and for our entire family. The hardship it would create, both emotionally and financially for them, if they were denied this permit, would be considerable. Though, in closing, we respectfully ask that you all decide to grant the approval for this building permit based on it meeting all of the requirements set forth in the town code. And I thank you again for this opportunity and your consideration.
Great, thank you. Bailey, you want to tell us what your work and the town attorney's work involved?
So, I did a standard review on the building permit application. I reviewed for any relevant codes. In this situation, there had been a previous concern over development on the lot. So, I took the time to do a little bit more research and speak with the town attorney to make sure that it met all the requirements. The proposed project is entirely in the downtown commercial district, where they want to put the house, so I approached it in, in that aspect of the projects in downtown commercial. It needs to meet downtown culture requirements, and it does not have any road furniture requirement. I double-checked myself with the town attorney, seeing it, knowing that that concern could bring about an appeal and knowing that the town attorney would be fighting on the town's behalf in any further appeal process. So, we want to make sure that we're on the same page with the town attorney. Her disagreement with me in saying that it needed to meet the resource protection road furniture meant that I had to deny the permit. And that's where we are today.
Want to elaborate on why she said no?
She, I think she said no. And in her letter, which I have here, it seems that she's coming from a stance that there's no code specific to that, specific to using the requirements for the zone that the project is entirely in, but rather using the zone that the property has a majority of. So, the property itself has majority in resource protection, and though the project itself is happening in downtown commercial, she states that her, her opinion is that the majority of the district, the majority of the property being in the resource protection district means that that should be the district that rules.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question? Yeah, sure.
Can I, Bailey, is that something that she told you in person? Because that's not anywhere in the memorandum that she sent you, that I could see.
I believe that was in a phone conversation.
Okay. Because it, that, in her conclusion and in everything in that letter, it says nothing about percentage-wise that that would matter. I'm just curious.
Bailey, I want to ask you a question. Is there a precedent that's been set somewhere that? I think what she's implying is that if you have a lot that encompasses more than one zone, the requirements for the whole lot would be that of the majority zone that the lot is in. So, basically saying that the majority of the lot is in resource protection, then all requirements for resource protection would have to be met by the whole lot. Is there a precedent for that? I think that's what she's saying.
Yes, I believe that is what she's saying. There may be a precedent for that, but there has never been a situation with, with, in not meeting the requirements of both districts before. So, I've worked with lots that are partially in resource protection, partially in woodland district, where they were building entirely in the woodland district, but they met all requirements for both the resource protection and the woodland, so there's no incentive of them not meeting one or the other.
Well, I think the lawyer says that, but she fails to substantiate, I think. I mean, she, she did, she gives no reference to a past practice or a precedent for that.
No, I don't believe she does.
But I mean, maybe that's just because that's an assumption that's made by her or lawyers, and that's probably not by, but I think we should have had a, some reasoning for that, if that was going to be the case. Because otherwise, you would, I'm assuming, deal with the lot, what's in one section would become under that rules, what's in the other section would come under that rules, but...
That's how I interpreted it.
Right.
Bailey, could I ask you another question? Did you, if, do I, I don't know if I remember correctly. Did you say you brought up the issue about the section thirty-eight point four point four with the lawyer, about the division of lots and district boundaries?
Mr. Chairman, you can structure as to how a public hearing works. She needs to address the chairman, you know, with all her questions and not just jump in everybody, everything. Okay? Sorry.
But I mean, I can't see the other people in the room, so I didn't know how to do that. I apologize.
Sorry, go ahead. Go ahead with what you wanted to say.
Me? No, I just was asking Bailey. I thought I remembered her saying that she brought up to the lawyer's attention that section eight, section thirty-eight point four point four about the division of lots by district boundaries. Because that, to me, makes it pretty clear. And I thought she said she had talked to her about it, and I didn't, but I didn't know what the lawyer's response is to why that wouldn't apply.
So, that was relevant to less restrictive zones or...
It was, um...
Or less restrictive zones going into more restrictive zones, where this is a situation of a more restrictive zone going into a less restrictive zone?
Yeah, it was basically, sounded like the opposite of what we're doing. That the regulations applicable to the less restricted port, restricted portion of the lot, which in this case would be downtown commercial, could be extended in more than fifty feet into the more restricted. So, to me, that speaks to which way you would be able to apply it.
So, I don't know, I have a part of, I believe this is part of her letter from Kristin Collins on the second page, where she talks about single-family dwellings.
Which document?
Second from the last page. It's the second page of Kristin Collins, but which, how's the problem? What's the difference between a memorandum and a letter? Because this isn't signed or anything.
I don't know if there is a difference.
I can read it. It says, "The church agrees that no single-family dwelling may be erected on this lot due to the fact that part of this lot in the resource protection is in the resource protection district. As discussed above, my opinion is that the lot cannot be built upon because of its failure to meet the dimensional requirements." But you found that it did. The, the portion of that lot that was in downtown commercial met the dimensional requirements.
For downtown commercial, yes.
Okay. Then it says, "However, for the sake of addressing all points raised by the church, I do not believe a single-family dwelling would be prohibited if the law were otherwise legal." The house is proposed to be located in the downtown commercial district, where that use is allowed. If it were to extend by even one foot into the resource protection district, it would be prohibited.
It would need planning board approval.
Right.
Planning board can approve a single-family dwelling in resource protection if it meets all the dimensional requirements.
But they're not even making use of a footprint in the resource protection.
Correct.
So, I guess I don't understand why it isn't buildable. Because they're, they're applying the more restrictive. This, this is kind of a paradox here, where she's arguing against her own argument. So, she's, she, in one, in one state, or at least it doesn't appear in this letter, she's telling you that the more restrictive district governs the development of a piece of property. But then she's saying, as long as you don't go one single foot into the less restrictive district, then it would be allowable.
Yeah, I believe that's, she's assuming that would be the situation that met the road furniture requirement, the dimensional requirement. A hypothetical situation.
Right, which unfortunately, the town zoning ordinance has somehow skipped over the road frontage requirement in downtown commercial.
Right.
So, does that mean there is none?
That's what I would go by.
Yeah, she states that there's no, no requirement in a commercial district for road frontage. Yeah, on the first page, it says, "To the best of my knowledge, the dimensional requirement for the land use ordinance in this place today were also in place in twenty-seventeen. For a lot resource protection, there is no minimum road frontage in downtown commercial."
Right.
But this, this is every other lot description in downtown commercial for setbacks.
Right, but just no...
Coverage of lots.
Just no road frontage. So, let's just say that this whole lot was in downtown commercial. You'd still not be required to have any road frontage. According to the way the zoning ordinance is.
Yeah, I guess. And it goes on to say, "In this case, the owner is not seeking to have the standards of the less restrictive district to be extended into the more restrictive district, but rather to have the dimensional requirements, frontage, to be applied to the district in which the dimensions sits, which that dimension sits. There's no definitive answer as to how the code should be applied in this case. However, based on the overall structure of the town, my opinion is that the lot does not have the applicable road frontage requirement. But there is no frontage requirement.
Right.
That she's classified it all as resource protection." Further on in her letter, it says, "There is no basis under these provisions to consider the portion within the resource protection and the portion within the downtown commercial district separately. Further, if we apply the frontage standard only to the district in which that frontage sits, developers could avoid more restrictive standards just by accessing any development through a less restrictive zone. The ordinance intended to require development in the resource protection zone is to be spread out. To interpret the code and allow this large, larger resource protection lot to benefit from the downtown commercial district's lack of frontage requirement would go against that intent." Okay. You guys have any questions so far?
I'm just, would like to see it be a little clearer and more precise. It seems quite vague to me.
Please, on the ordinance committee. Yeah. There's something, there's something to look at, though. You know, road frontage in downtown commercial district, whether it needs to be dealt with.
It's in the draft.
Yeah. Okay. What's up?
We should hear what the rest of the people...
Yeah, just wanted to get questions out this far. Okay. Bob, you want to tell us what your side is?
Yeah, just a brief statement for the record. The Quasic Union Church supports the code enforcement officer's denial of the Reynolds' building permit. We do so on the basis of both the town attorney's opinion of March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, and the new alternative. Our attorney's letter to the code enforcement officer dated September ninth, twenty-twenty-one. A copy of our attorney's letter is already in the records before this board. In addition, we note that the town code, Article thirty-eight point eight point three, provides that this board may only reverse the decision by the code enforcement officer upon a finding that the decision is clearly contrary to specific provisions of the code. The decision of the code enforcement officer is not clearly contrary to specific provisions of the code. As the town attorney observed in her opinion, there is no definitive answer as to how the code should be applied here. Indeed, the church, its attorney, and the town attorney all read specific provisions of the code differently in arriving at the same conclusion. The lot is not buildable. But we believe the town attorney is correct in taking a broader view in her approach. Looking to the overall structure and intent of the code, she concludes that building on this sort of weirdly configured lot, straddling and arbitraging two distinct zoning districts is not what the code intends. Okay?
Okay. This is a good one. Look back at the bottom of her memorandum, that paper you were just reading on.
Okay, yeah.
I had something the other night. She stated right at the very bottom of page two, it says, "Well, single-family dwelling is categorized as a use. In the land use table, shoreline zoning administrations generally understand that it is, excuse me, regulating the structure, not the use. For example, even though the lawn is in a resource protection district, it is used for residential purposes, it is allowed as long as the residence itself is located outside of the resource protection." So, I was trying to figure out what that meant. So, as long as they're not outside, doesn't mean it conforms?
Well, yeah.
Because it was like, she stated both ways and bought herself, so it was confusing.
Well, I mean, we can talk about this stuff once we get into the regular meeting.
Right.
This is a public hearing. So, anybody else who has anything to present? On the public? I guess no? Okay.
Ryan, just one question. You relate, made reference to, was it twenty-seventeen? There is a code in regards to the road?
Uh, no. It says, "The lot in question was created in twenty-seventeen when Stony Batter Enterprises split the parent parcel." I don't recall twenty-seventeen anyplace else, but...
I thought I heard you say something in regards to twenty-seventeen, and there was nothing replacing it since then, so I wasn't quite, I didn't have that right then.
Okay.
She goes on to say, "To the best of her knowledge, the dimensional climate of the land use ordinance in place today were also in place in twenty-seventeen."
Oh, where do you see that, Dennis?
Right at the memorandum. At the top paragraph.
Okay.
So, that would mean that what's on the books now, not having been changed, even if there's a pending change, as it exists now, that was buildable under that or not?
No, it's unchanged. It's the same situation.
Yeah, right. And so, there's no, nothing prohibitive to do what's being proposed based on what twenty-seventeen code had.
Yeah. So, anyways, you were right about the twenty-seventeen, I must have. Dennis was...
What I was trying to get at is if there was a, some law, something of code, as of a certain date, that would have been prohibitive to do what is being proposed, that would still be in place, right? If there was a change or a variance or something, it would be to the twenty-seventeen code. Nothing has changed since then.
No. It's, yeah, that, that sentence reads, "To the best of my knowledge, the dimensional requirements of the land use ordinance in place today were also in place in twenty-seventeen." So... Anyways, is there any more question, please?
So, can I ask Bailey a question? Is, what is the road frontage for that lot? It's like seventy-five.
Fifty, fifty-nine, fifty.
Fifty, fifty-something.
Fifty-something, yeah.
So, and that, the way the permit was applied for in the commercial downtown zone, it does meet all the requirements to be above the law?
Yes.
So, I think with a slippery slope, when you start trying to tell people what they can and can't do, when they're clearly trying to meet all the criteria to build the residence. If you start saying that they can't build because they're abutting a certain cost of land, where does that stop?
Okay. Any other?
Just one other observation.
Just one other observation, I think, given the difficulty that people are having with the town attorney's position, and given the evident lack of support by the code enforcement officer herself with respect to that opinion, which she followed in arriving at her decision, it would have been preferable to have the attorney present at this hearing and the lawyer to speak for herself.
Right.
Ryan, one, one other thing, directing it towards you. At another case that I was here for at one time, you made a statement that we very rarely go against the position or statement of the code enforcement officer. And what the code enforcement officer is saying in regards to this, you would have to disagree with if you granted this.
Well, she originally, she originally approved it, or had thoughts of approving it until she spoke with the town attorney. Okay, well, I think what we'll do.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Of representative of the church. Could you tell us here at the public hearing, if you have any specific objections to someone building a house on that lot? And any reason why to that?
Yes, the reason this came up, we, we had sort of slept through the sale process and so forth, it was dragged off for three years, and I believe that was because the property had issues. People who looked into it determined that there were zoning issues and so forth. Somebody described it as, you know, property with a lot of hair on it. We sort of stumbled into the entire thing as we were doing work for our own pavilion, which is going to be up in sort of the corner of our lot, which we had just a few years ago finally obtained as a donation by Union Water Power Company. It took us about ten years to pull that off, so now that we actually own the property, we were hoping to put a pavilion up there. And Ellen Albrecht, who was working with us on the design, noticed clearing occurring, brought it to our attention, and we began to investigate, and sure enough, our pavilion, we're looking right out on Leach Field and the equipment and all kinds of stuff like that. I mean, it, it was directly antithetical to our intent. So we, we shelved our plans and turned to this matter and attempted to sort of get the property thing sorted out. And we, at no time, you know, we're, we're sort of playing a game with the acquirer. We, we have acted in good faith from the very beginning. We're quick to propose that we use our best efforts to raise the funds necessary to take him out and make him whole. That was not, you know, responded to, but that, that was our, our intent. We did not want to work hardship on this individual, this couple by any means. This is just something that happened to clash with our ownership, you know, use and enjoyment of our property.
So basically, you kind of reject to that someone building a house there, which is going to be close proximity to the pavilion that you're planning, so that would take away, away from that pavilion?
Yeah, the setting. There are a number of issues with it. The driveway has zero setback, basically. It's, it's an old woodland path, and it goes right hard by our, our, our boundary. So we're going to have traffic going up and down, we're going to have, as a result of the, the resource protection component of the parcel, which is substantial. The only place you could theoretically, and we don't accept that this is actually the case, but in theory, you would have to have it, you know, as one person put it in the parking lot of the Gentry, but well, not quite. But I mean, it is right, you know, in our face. Had, had it been otherwise zoned, I mean, if the thing could have been backed back, and if there had been enough land there to, to have a driveway that would not sort of literally be on our, on our edge.
So you're saying of that fifty-nine or fifty-some wide feet wide, that your driveway is basically right up against the edge in that?
That, that is, yeah, that, that's our parking lot. That's where there's a, you know, another easement.
So is that road or not over to one edge of that, maybe in the center of that section, or over to the left of that section? That would obviously be better for you.
Yes, as to that issue, yes. It doesn't address the issue of replacement of the house, sort of the right to, you know, it's, it's within our, our line of sight, and it really will change the, the, the nature, the aesthetic of, of our, you know, traditional forest setting. It's been that way for a hundred years, and it's just sort of part of our identity.
If there were to be a blind or a buffer piece put in there so that you could not see this house from the gap there, would you still have the same bumper objection?
It depends. That's, that's a hypothetical that I can.
No, but I mean, something working with the owner too, because I believe if they can go to the planning board and actually build in the resource protection path, is that correct?
If they had the road frontage.
Right. You mean the hundred and fifty feet?
So you're, yeah, I'm confused by that.
I'm just looking at different, different options and trying to find out your opposition to, to this. So I think that, that weighs in on this as well, you know, if there's something that could be worked out, and that's something that could be done, that would be the benefit for all, and plus the town would be protected. To me, that would be one of the best outcomes that could be for all. If not, then we have to go the other way.
I have one question for the church. This lot went for sale in two thousand seventeen. Did you guys ever make an attempt to try to acquire it, or, I'm, I'm just asking a question.
No, we, we didn't, and we, we had expressed a hope that it would be donated to the church. That's, that's how we, that's how we do real estate. We are not a real estate investor, we're not a developer. We're a church, and our balance sheet is roughly half of the asking price, or actually, the, the sale price is significantly less than half of the asking price for that parcel. It was never a possibility that the church would go into the business of acquiring land around it. We rely on the zoning laws and so forth to protect our interests. We really, we stepped through it. And as I say, we made this observation in the letter that we sent to the Reynolds. Mistakes were made. I mean, there were a lot of people that sort of might have done things differently if they had been focused on the case at the time. We're not, you know, saying that we're exempt from, from that at all.
Can, can I interject something?
What I'd like to do is just close the public hearing and take this up in the regular meeting, because we're really getting beyond the public hearing portion as far as the statements.
I just didn't want to go without saying something. If something was going to be decided, I wanted.
We're not going to decide anything, because this is a public hearing, so. So I make a motion, we close the public.
Can I say one, can I just make a comment to what the gentleman from the church said?
Sure.
About, just about, because I think one of you asked, you know, what, basically, bottom line, what would their, what is their objection, what, what would be a hardship of having the house there? And it sounded like they've had plans for this pavilion, whatever he called it for a while, that I wonder why this wasn't, I know his balance sheet and buying the land made or may not have been an option financially, but knowing that, that house, that, that being for sale for three years, anybody could have bought that, and this house, a house going in, I just, I'm sure I'm not wording it right. I'm kind of frustrated. I can't.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. Yeah.
I, I just know my son, that they bought this in good faith. It was sold as a buildable lot. He loves that land. He had no problem giving the easement to the church. That was part of the requirement of the sale. He didn't want to hardship on the church, not, you know, not do that. And I know that he spoke to other people that thought about buying that land, but like I said, I think in the last meeting, they wanted to build as close to the river, and I think that's why it sat as long as it did. But the church, in my opinion, had to know that someone was going to buy that if it was for sale. And I, it feels unfair to put this on him now to.
Just, just to correct the record, Mr. Reynolds did not grant us an easement.
Well, not grant, he had to agree to it in order to.
He did not have to agree to it. It was, it was given to us by Stony Batter Enterprises.
Right, in his deed that it, that was part of the sale listing, that he had to do that. Or he, they, I think anybody that was going to buy that lot had to agree to that. That was my understanding. That's how it's worded in the deed.
I, I'm not sure. I think that the easement was given before the sale.
Correct.
Yes.
Right.
Given by Stony Batter. And once that easement is given, that easement will carry that easement forever.
I think it was.
It wasn't, it wasn't the new owners that gave the easement.
But I think it was same day, it just got recorded the same day, but one was recorded earlier than the other. I think it all went through at the same time.
No, the, the actual record was the easement went through because the easement was signed. If it went through, the easement was given by somebody else, it wouldn't have been signed by Stony Batter. Stony Batter had the rights to give the easement.
Right, so it was just a coincidence that they gave the easement the day before the sale was closed?
Yes, because they wanted the church to have the easement before they sold the land.
Right, right. I, yeah, that's what I guess I mean. I'm not wording it correctly, but I, that he knew that that was part of the deal. My son did, I'm trying to say, that that.
The buyer knew that there was going to be an easement before.
Correct, correct, yes. And that, he was fine with that, and he, you know, he, a, as I said before, it's not ideal to have to secure a driveway, but he was okay with that, and he doesn't have any problem. I know that, so the representative from the church has said, you know, like, they don't want to look out and see the leach field or the equipment, but that, I would argue, would just be temporary while they're building. He plans to build a beautiful home and for his family, so I don't see it as a hardship to have this home there. And just based on everything that we've talked about in both of our meetings, I feel like he meets all of the requirements to do so. Everything in the church's, the letter from the attorney for the church was, almost all of it was based on their stating that there was that hundred-foot requirement, when that wasn't true, that there isn't any minimum frontage. So almost all of their argument in that regard.
Listen, Mr. Chairman, our document speaks for itself. Our lawyers' work products.
I'm sorry, I wasn't finished. I just wanted to say, there was also some stuff in that letter that, you know, I think we talked about last time about that for all intents and purposes, my son had no frontage because cars would be parked there, and he wouldn't be able to get through, and we argued, you know, we, we clarified that the church wasn't present for that meeting, but that, that wasn't also not true, that you have to keep that road open. So I just, I couldn't find anything in the twelve or so pages from the church's attorney that states anything that would, I guess, change what my position is, that he has met all the requirements. I'm, I'm not sure about how much I'm, like, I should just set up or what. I can't, like I said, I can't see people, so I don't really, can't really read the room.
So anyways, I make a motion that we end the public hearing. Anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? And.
Are we dismissed?
Pardon?
Are we dismissed?
Oh, no, we're going to take this up in the regular meeting.
Now we can openly talk about it and make decisions. We just had to hear everybody's opinion in the public hearing. That was the.
So we can open the regular meeting at six fifty-six? Is there any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
Review and approve the minutes from May twelve, uh, seventeen.
I put a motion forward to approve the minutes from May seventeen, two thousand twenty-two.
I'm second. Okay, all in favor? No correspondence? And under old business notice of decision, signatures needed for the RFA. Do you need both of these signed?
Yes, please. One will be on record, one goes to the.
So this is just a final notice and I forget what it's called, just went out on my head. The reasoning behind why we decided what we decided. So that's all set for you. Okay, so, back to the application by Michael Reynolds. Except, I mean, it's not unusual that by the time things get here, that there's a strong difference of opinion between people. I'm a little concerned with a church's standpoint. Maybe it's, doesn't have merit, but you didn't seem to have a very strong opinion about it, and you admitted that it flew under your radar or things will mess. But it has the appearances now that there's a little remorse that either you weren't gifted the land, or didn't have the ability to buy it, that you want to control the appearances of it, and that it clashes with what you wanted to do with the pavilion. That's just an observation. I don't really need an answer to it, but it's just the things that are going through my head. So Bailey, I wanted to ask you, seems like there's really two options here that might be possible. One might be to send it to the planning board and see what they come up with. I would imagine that if this thing goes to court, that at some point, they might go, why didn't this go to the planning board?
I don't believe the planning board has any standing in this.
You don't?
No. It's not in the resource protection district, so the church itself is not going in the resource protection district, so I don't believe that they have standing.
Right, but they're using the resource protection district as a limiting factor.
What if they chose to build a house in the resource protection?
Then planning board would be the reviewing authority. If we want to consider the entire property under the resource protection zoning, then it doesn't meet the dimensional requirements, and I would not even refer it to the planning board.
Okay. So another, another question I have is, Bob Landis brought this up. Why wasn't the town attorney made available, at least, you know?
The town attorney's opinion was at my request, and it was used as evidence for me to make a determination. Her opinion is not the determination, so she is not the party that, that they're looking at, so that's why it wasn't.
Well, I understand that, since her, in my view, her letters got a few things that are contradictory. So.
I don't believe it's standard practice to have the town attorney available for zoning board appeal meetings. But I, we can look in, I can look into that.
We've had it in the past.
I I didn't even think to. I didn't even realize that that was best practice if their opinion was involved in the original determination.
Yeah.
I don't believe we had, was the town attorney involved in the appeal in the fall of twenty twenty? Because it was by her opinion again, and that I made the determination then and she didn't attend.
We're going to ask her.
The solar farm. It was by her opinion that I made that determination, similar to it was by.
She was here for the concrete plant.
Right, but she wasn't here for the solar farm.
I think so.
Right, so I I didn't realize that she had attended other meetings based on her opinion that was given towards the determination.
Yeah. Yeah, even in the past for like planning board meetings and things, it was fairly common. I don't know, it's just I have a hard time with it where her letter was so contradictory, or at least I thought it was in places. So. What do you guys think?
I kind of echo what you're saying. I have a big concern about the town attorneys seemingly choosing to apply the resource protection guidelines to the whole lot. Because maybe that most of the law, majority of the law wasn't resource protection, but she does not, she does not really say that. And she doesn't show that as a precedent. And so I think she's using that to apply the road frontage to the piece of the lot that is not in resource protection. When it's not clear that that's why she's doing it. So I agree with Brian. It's very unclear to me as to I don't think there's good solid ground there to make a decision. I can see where it may have been difficult for you after reading that to actually understand what she was saying, to be honest with you. My other concern is that I, being a person that likes to see everybody get along, would like to be able to see the owner of the land and the church come to some agreement where things could be done so that each ones were satisfied, satisfied, so that each could be in harmony. Now that's, I'm not saying that that's going to happen or directed that, but.
It's a fairy tale.
It could be a fairy tale, yes.
Yes.
Yes, but I think that I'd like to see a better clarification from the town attorney as to why she chose to use that frontage requirement in that situation.
Yeah, well, you know, I'm interested in getting it done right, not just getting it right done.
Exactly, so.
Can I ask, I'm not sure which one of you just said it, but a question about trying to make it so that both sides are happy?
Oh, that was Dennis.
Dennis?
My my favorite, that's all.
Just just like what is on your mind? Would that look like? Like, would it be if Michael could plant, you know, plant some trees that they will block if they had that object that strongly to looking at his house? Like, maybe.
We're not here to negotiate that or work on that process, okay? That's that's not something we're going to.
Oh, I thought you would.
No, no, I'm just making a suggestion. That's something that those two entities could get together, work themselves, but still remember, no matter what you come up for an agreement, the code enforcement officer has still denied a building permit. So that's issue number one that needs to be resolved.
Do you have something you want to change your mind?
I was going to say exactly what I answered, but that would be outside of this meeting.
Right. Having an opinion, Brian?
There was. All eyes, reading the attorney's back and forth. And she's trying to say, well, if you have a certain percentage of, or she's trying to get a percentage of, so if I owned a thousand acres and six hundred of it are resource protection and the other four hundred are in commercial, does that mean I'm not allowed to use any of my four hundred acres in commercial? Because it's the majority of the lot I own is one piece is resource protection? I I find that hard to believe. And she gave no case study to say otherwise. So as long as he can conform to what he's supposed to in the area, I don't see how this can be figured out any other way. I mean, it's just, it's confusing. And I know it's it's hard on you guys because you don't want to look at it. And I get the the church and the nostalgia of it being the old church and and everything around it. But then you have a lot next door that's sold to somebody else. I get you guys work on a tight budget. It's a church. I get it, but it it's like, I don't know, it's just hard. I guess I'm not trying to get out what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, can I ask a question?
Yes, for finish.
Oh, I was just going to ask a question of the church, like I've been up there a few times. I'm not super familiar with the area. My son is more than I am, but it was my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, that the church is only operational for a couple of the the summer months. And so to my mind, it's makes it even more like, you know, most of the year, they're they're not there, they're not going to see it. It's not going to affect them. The times that they are there is I'm assuming one or two days a week on the weekends for services. And it just seems unfair to put that kind of hardship to prevent him from building there where in a perfect world, you know, they wouldn't have to deal with somebody buying it, but it was a sale as a buildable lot. He did buy it. It is his land. And then go ahead and say whatever you wanted to say. I just wanted to say that.
I was just going to make the observation that this this lot since its creation was a major question mark. Nobody knew whether this would be buildable. There is, you know, correspondence between the banks, appraiser and code enforcement officer and so forth. It was always a question mark. There was never any indication and the the fact of matter is, this thing was was broadly marketed as resource protected property. It had some buildable lot thing in there. I don't know, that's as the broker, why they did it that way. But the price paid for the property clearly reflects the ambiguity, indeed the likelihood that it's not buildable. Ninety five thousand dollars for four hundred feet of shoreline frontage on Rangeley Lake.
Really?
You know, clearly, clearly, the the price reflected it. Everybody knew this was an option. This was a possibility. It wasn't ever sort of something that anybody backed on and assumed could happen. It was it was a fire and and that's fine. We have no objection to that. People take fires all the time and make bets and so forth. However, it is not the case that, you know, this was clearly a doable deal. And there's some sort of injustice being being done here by virtue of this decision.
But but it did, it was sold by Morton and Furbish as a buildable lot. It says snowmobile right from your front door, access to, you know, the the river, all of that.
The unfortunate part of that is, I think.
And she, the attorney even says, you're not supposed to, in her first footnote, says it is of no consequence that the lot was advertised as being within resource protection. Its zoning is as shown as a town zoning now.
Well, yeah, and the fact that the fact that Morton and Furbish advertised it as anything and called it anything and said you could do anything doesn't necessarily make it legal, you know, that might.
But even in the appraisal.
Might be something you need to take up with Morton and Furbish.
But even in the bank appraisal, they asked that the price be adjusted if it was not buildable. And it said there was a note that it could be, you know, that 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 wasn't going to be an issue. I can't find the paper I'm looking for right now, but.
Brian, rather than arguing, I'm going to make one observation that, and that was Margie Jameson, by the way, who was the real attorney. There have been two attorneys now, our attorney, your attorney, who have said no. Now, Mark Mark is calling for a definition of what criteria the your attorney used. That's two attorneys, no, no. Building a code enforcement officer, not issuing a building permit. Now, that's three negatives. So in my humble opinion, if you overrule all of that and grant approval to this family, there's going to have to be a lot of reasoning why they overruled that.
Yeah. And that's all of that is just part of the whole process. And we're just trying to get to the bottom of this. Especially, Ken, could you give me a minute to finish, please? We're just trying to get to the bottom of this and do the best we can. You know, take in all the information. That's our purpose. We take in the information and decide whether or not we're going to support the code enforcement officer and the attorneys. We try to do as best a job, as good a job as we can, listening to everybody and collecting as much information and take it from there. So that's just, that's just the town's established.
Can I can I just say what I wanted to say before I forget? I'm sorry, I I hate interrupting you because I don't. I just wanted to say, make a point of what the gentleman just said about the three attorneys, the two attorneys and Bailey's opinion. The attorney for the church, everything in that letter, if there's one thing in that letter that is true, I'd love for them to point that out to me because everything in it that I see is not true. Every argument that they make, they may have based their decision on it because they're representing the church. They're going to say that it's not legal if he can't build there. The town attorney, as you all, I think you all agreed, was very ambiguous about it, contradictory statements. It was no, but I don't feel like in any way it was affirmed. No, there was no solid ground there for her reasoning. You could argue on, you know, everything that she said. And then Bailey, from what I understood, was got ready to approve it and decided not to approve it based on the guidance from the attorney. And if I'm wrong about that, I would love for her to clarify that. So it's not three solid no's, not at all.
Hey Bailey, do you know if there is actually a recorded deed that deals with the easement?
I have a copy of it.
The the, yes, the deed that is currently on the property shows the easement.
Okay. Now, one other thing I thought in relation to the easement is that in downtown commercial, which is where the church is, or unless it's some odd thing, because it's a church. The the side lots setback is five feet.
Yes.
So that's going to run and has the ability to run really close to your property. Say a five foot setback, but do it after me. Yeah, I guess I'm at the point where, you know, I've heard enough to be.
I got one more point.
Okay, what's that?
In the appraisal addendum, which was received by everyone before the sale, the code enforcement officer states the current in in the email to the seller that she cannot determine for sure if the lot is buildable. Now, if I'm buying something and I get an email from a code enforcement, please, would you let me speak? Thank you. If I'm getting something from the code enforcement officer, she can't tell me at this point in time whether it's buildable or not. To me, that's that's a caution flag. So, you know, there's a certain amount of fire beware. That coupled with the price of the the land, try to buy a piece of land this size and range it somewhere else on the water for ninety five thousand.
If I could just add the what the end of that sentence said that you just read also said, if necessary, the lot could be reconfigured to comply.
What does that mean?
You tell me. It says, it says Bailey Beers, the current CEO, states in an email to the seller that cannot, that she cannot determine for sure if the lot is buildable. If necessary, the lot could be configured to to comply.
What does that mean, Bailey? What does that mean?
That would not have been part of my statement.
That's not part of your statement?
No.
But that's what Michael read when he, before he bought it. So he, I know you were just saying like the onus is on him to, you know, like if you read that, why would you buy?
Where's that email states that the code enforcement officer?
I we never got a copy of that.
How do we know it's even exist?
In the appraisal addendum, it says there was an email exchange by between the seller and Bailey, but we were not privy to that.
So you're telling us that we shouldn't believe anything that the church wrote because it's none of it's true? And now we're supposed to believe what you're telling us with no.
No, I didn't. I didn't say you shouldn't believe anything in the church.
Yes, you did. You said that you should not believe anything that was in the church's memorandum. You said that, you said that tonight.
Yes, not from the church, from the church's attorney. If you look at, that was included in the first package that I sent you guys and, okay, so I can.
See where I'm getting at? You're basically saying that everybody else's information is wrong and yours is the only one that's correct. Is there something wrong with that kind of thinking or not?
Well, is it possible that that can be true? Because I'm saying in the letter that the attorney wrote representing the church, every time they make, okay, so it says applicable zoning districts, that it violates the one hundred foot minimum road frontage requirement.
Excuse me, I do not want to go through their statement point by point for you to prove to me that is false, okay?
I'm not, I'm not trying to.
Very much.
I I just want to, this is my only opportunity to speak and I just want to at least.
You've taken quite a few opportunities to speak, actually, especially when other people.
That's why I'm, it's hard for me to do this on Zoom because I can't, I'm not in the room with you and I apologize.
Well, that's that's your choice, I'm afraid.
I I'm sorry.
You're supposed to do that, you could have been.
I'm sorry, I explained I had an emergency roof now done last night and my intention was to go there. I had my hotel room. It was, I wanted to be able to do this for my son. I've been working on this for six months. It wasn't just like, I didn't just blow it off to make it easy on my life. I'm in actually in a lot of pain as we speak right now and I'm just trying, I know this is my only chance to talk on his behalf. And I'm sorry if I keep interrupting you because I'm, this is my second time ever doing Zoom.
Brian, do you have any other questions? Dennis?
No.
Okay. Does anybody see any need to further this pass tonight?
I'd be happier with a clearer explanation from the town attorney. I I'd feel better about that.
Ryan?
It was just reading real quick, one more statement. I was just reading through the deed that's in here. It's in here. There's one statement that says, "Grantee shall ensure that no vehicle parking occurs in the area identified as the existing driveway. This area should remain free for passage to the lot at all times." So that's your parking lot, correct? Is where I'm assuming that. When the deed, it says, shall be open at all time as planned, as its existing driveway. The area shall remain open for access to the lot at all times. For passage, excuse me, not access, passage to the lot at all times. I would just rebuild the deed real quick, I thought I'd bring that up.
Right now, they couldn't get up to that lot there on their property. There's a big tree that that cut and is working as a gate.
He was doing clear.
I don't care.
Do you want to make a motion? To table it and have the public, have the town attorney at least Skype them?
Well, I think Bailey is aware of the questions that we've been posed. And she could contact the town attorney to give her a feeling. And to have her maybe clarify her decision and why she recommended that the permit be denied. Because I know it, I agree with you, there's a little contradiction there and I'm not quite clear or heard reasoning. I mean, I can make some leaps and bounds here and there to get to some of it, but I'd like to see it explained clearly better by the town attorney about how she arrived at that conclusion. by the town attorney about how she arrived at that conclusion. Especially about the, uh, applying the restrictions of one zone to the, a portion of the lot that's not in that zone. I'd like to see if there's a precedent for that or, or whatever, because I, I don't understand how, how you make a decision in that, in that. I would make a motion that we, uh, if I see the code enforcement officer contact the town attorney for clarification of her, her recommendation.
Bailey?
I believe at this point in the appeal, I would not be the one that would have to contact. It would have to be your secretary, the town clerk.
Why so?
Because as you're appealing my decision and you're asking for further evidence towards that appeal, I believe it has to go through, I'm not positive, I would just ask that your motion asks for that information and we'll figure out who has to get it.
I would change that to, uh, from Bailey to the town clerk.
Okay.
To contact town council for clarification on her decision.
Okay. Do you want a second of that? Second, okay, all in favor?
And then I'm assuming we would meet one more time?
Yeah.
Two weeks, once we had that information, and then we could, uh,
Uh, gentlemen.
Resolve this matter.
Will we be given enough time to consult an attorney before that meeting?
Gentlemen, your next meeting would be the first Wednesday of July. You cannot do it in two weeks. Two weeks is going to be right after the town meeting, and there's absolutely no way to do that in here.
When the hell is July? Oh, it's way up there.
It's on there. It's, um, July 6th.
It's what?
July 6th.
Oh, okay. Okay, um, you have till July 6th, so you have three weeks.
Is that the same night as the Board of Slaughter's meeting?
That's a Wednesday, no time.
Okay. So this is Wednesday, July 6th?
That's the 20th.
Bailey? Wednesday, July 6th?
Yeah, I know.
July 6th. And that would be 6:00 PM.
Yep, please. Okay.
I would, I would just like to apologize for not being there in person tonight. I, their last meeting, I was given the impression that wasn't gonna be a problem, and my, like I said, my intention was to be there, and I had an emergency come up, so I hope that isn't being held against me.
Not held at all.
It sounded like it was.
Well, no, it's nothing held against you. We're just trying to run a meeting here where people, everybody gets a chance to speak, and all questions go to the chairman. You don't, uh, uh, carry out a conversation, start a conversation with the code enforcement officer or anybody else, or somebody at the church, you run it through the chairman. We're trying to keep it an orderly meeting. You seem to have a tendency, everyone's a lot, and just jump right in.
I'm one of 10 kids, so I have a tendency to do that because I grew up being, having a hard time being heard. I, I know I, I interrupt people a lot, so I apologize for that, but I, I just didn't.
That's the only reason that I mentioned something is because, like I say, we're trying to run an organized meeting.
I'm, I'm, and I'm trying my best.
And then the chairman has spoke to you several times, in fact, you're interrupting me now. The chairman has spoke to you several times about how we run the meeting, and I'm just hoping that you would get the, thank you.
Okay, so, um, that's where we stand on that matter. We'll be back here on Wednesday, July the 6th, 6 o'clock. There won't be a public hearing that I know of, so, you know, we'll take, we'll dive right into it then. So we have one other matter, um, review of the updated applications and permits as presented on May 17th, 2022 by Bailey. I noticed one other typo. It was, it was the same one again.
I don't know if, which one is that?
It was on the town of Rangeley variance request application. Good, thank you for coming in, well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So on page one, it was zoning board of appeals and under authority.
Would you let her know she's freely leaving the meeting if she wants?
Oh, yeah. Oh, Amy, you're free to leave the meeting if you want. We're just talking about another, some applications.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where on that page one is the zoning board of appeals?
It says number two authority, the zoning board has authorities, but it's supposed to be zoning board of appeals.
Oh, is this on the attorney's fact sheet?
It's on, uh, variance request application.
Oh, okay, yeah, gotcha, the worksheet.
And then on page three, where it says based on 58J above, this is, that's the same mistake, the zoning board of appeals. And other than that, that's all I saw, so seems like these should meeten up some things.
Well, I'll pass a motion to, with Brian's changes, to approve the application paperwork put in front of us on March, May 17th.
New and updated.
New and updated.
Yes, I have a second.
All in favor? Good.
Motion to close the meeting?
Yep. Anybody want to do that? I'll put a motion forward to close the meeting.
Second?
All in favor?